Good morning. Want to welcome everybody to Harton County Commissioners Court. This is a special session this morning. It is nine AM, Monday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. The primary focus of our agenda this morning is a budget workshop. At this time, all members of the court are present and the meeting will come to order. Everyone will please rise for the invocation by Judge Brewer, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Judge. This time we'll move on to item number three, Budget Workshop, to review and discuss the proposed fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget submitted by the following departments. And we'll start with the District Clerk's office. Good morning, Ms. Hogue. How are you? And everybody should have the proposal that was submitted by Ms. Hogue. And that would be the District Clerk budget as well as the District Clerk preservation fees. Ms. Hogue, you requested a couple of increases. And we'd just like for you to address those and then explain those to the court and answer any questions that they may have.
Okay. Uh, one was equipment rentals. We had switched to a, um, a new zero-ops copier last year and, um, somehow it was like three hundred dollars off, um, as far as we went over. We have so many copies under the contract and then additional copies are charged out. And so I felt like this year we better ask for about that same amount. And, uh, so that would be about three hundred. The other line is travel and training expense. Um, as you know, we're trying to keep up with the tax laws, the civil laws, um, criminal laws and the, um, seems like the hotel rates we're getting from our organizations are a little high. So we shop them around and stay at the least expensive hotel, but I've not been turning in all of my expenses. And so I would ask that it go up a little bit, fifteen hundred increase.
So you're asking for forty-five hundred?
Yes, totally.
And is it, now are you the only one traveling or do you have assistants travel with you?
No, I have been having assistants travel and I went back and figured it cost me eight hundred dollars this year for them to go. So.
First remark I have on that is I believe we should reimburse you for that. You shouldn't be out that, that money for your, uh, staff going to training. So, uh, unless there's any objection, I think we should make sure that we reimburse Ms. Hogue for the expenses that she's paid for her deputies to go to training. I think that's important.
Well, it's not so much theirs as what I did was I, I wouldn't turn in some meals. Sometimes I wouldn't turn in mileage so they could have their meals. So they, their part's been paid. It's just me.
But I would still agree that we reimburse three.
And, uh, the increase on this line item is from three thousand to forty-five hundred? And that, that is what you anticipate spending next year for training for you and your staff? Not, not over that amount?
Right, not over forty-five hundred.
Any other questions regarding that, uh, request for increase? All right, and then, uh, did you have any other increases?
Nope.
The only question I have, uh, and this is coming from, uh, the auditor requested me to, to make sure we clarify this item. It talks about your, uh, donation for furniture and fixtures. I know you had some donated funds.
Yes.
And you're requesting to include eleven thousand one thirty in that line item for next year?
That's the balance.
That means, uh, that you don't anticipate spending it in this budget?
No, I'm trying to, but we're getting bids, so.
I think what we're gonna do there is the same thing we did last year. We'll, we'll zero that line item out for the budget itself. But whenever you, um, uh, at the end of the year, whatever's left over, we'll do a budget amendment, the first meeting in, in, uh, Sep- uh, October. Just remind us to put that on the agenda. And we'll amend the budget to carry that amount forward because that's actual cash money. It's not a, it's not a budget item. Did I say that right, Angela?
Yes, that's correct. We've been very blessed by someone too. If you haven't seen our office, we have new shelving instead of the old, um, file cabinets. They were pulling some backs out because they wouldn't open and they were, you know, drawers were stuck, so. It's been a great help.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the county attorney and Rebecca could not be here this morning. She's not here, is she? She told me that she probably would not be. So we have our proposed budget, a copy of the proposed budget that Rebecca submitted. And this includes the, uh, county attorney's budget and the county attorney pre-trial diversion. Uh, there are no, uh, real increases in the pre-trial diversion. It pays for itself. Let's talk about a couple of increases in the county attorney's budget. The first line item is the investigator mileage reimbursement. Uh, she's showing that the actual amount spent, and you can see that in green at the bottom. The typical weekly mileage is three hundred and fifty miles at point five-three-five per mile, which is running about one eighty-seven twenty-five per week. She requested eighty-nine eighty-eight there and I just rounded that up. I believe if you look in the proposed budget when we get to that, I think I rounded that up to nine thousand dollars even. Uh, that is a line item she had in her budget in the past. However, uh, the person that held that position before was being paid a vehicle allowance out of another budget. And the Commissioners Court removed this item from the county attorney's budget with the understanding if she ever hired a different person, it would be added back. So I don't think anybody here has any, uh, question about adding it back. Does anybody have any question regarding the amount?
Okay, are you gonna, you gonna give a vehicle allowance rather than pay mileage?
Oh, sir, it'll be mileage reimbursement and that's my, my position on, uh, any, uh, new employees that we, uh, pay for their mileage. I think we should pay for their actual miles.
What were we paying on the, for his, if he, if we were giving him the vehicle allowance, what was that?
Well, I think back in the day, that was probably in two thousand twelve, it was much lower. I don't know the amount, but it, it was probably somewhere around six thousand dollars.
You're saying which, whichever one would be less and...
And I think we should pay him for the actual miles he's driving for the county. I can tell you that the investigators in the DA's office get eighty-one hundred dollars a year for vehicle allowance. So that would be less if we were to go that, that route, but I don't think we would be paying the employee the amount of miles he's actually driving. All right, the next item that she's asked, requested the increase on is on, uh, equipment expense and that has to do with a increase from the, um, IT person on her, uh, monthly payment for her management on her computers. Increasing from eighty-five dollars to one forty-five and that has to do with remote access to the computers. They didn't have that last year and they want to include that in the budget next year. I believe those were the only two increases that were requested and that increase amount is from five thousand to fifty-seven twenty, so it's a seven hundred and twenty dollar increase. Any discussion or questions on that?
Networking plus, is that one of our vendors?
Yes, sir.
Have we bid that out to see if we could get, get it any cheaper?
Uh, is Misty here?
A better rate?
I don't know of anyone else that provides that. I'm sure there are others, but.
I'd like to see us at some point go out for request or proposal for IT services or, uh, the county hire their own. But instead of just giving it to one picked person, I'd like to see us go out for bid to make sure we're getting the best price.
It's a service that he offered and, and, uh, I think that came up sometime in twenty twelve or twenty thirteen and slowly but surely departments have come on to that. And so it has grown, uh, it's an expense that has grown and I agree that we should check and see that, that we're, uh, not paying more than somebody else may be able to provide that service for. Next, we have the Sheriff's Office. Morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
And I'll just refer everyone to the actual proposed budget on page thirty-nine. There were, uh, two increases that the Sheriff requested and, uh, the Sheriff met with me over the past couple of weeks, probably, I don't know, three or four times to discuss his budget. There was one line item on the, uh, main law enforcement budget, the oh-one, oh-one oh-five sixty for vehicle maintenance. I believe, is that right, Sheriff?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
And he requested an increase from thirty-six thousand to forty-one thousand, a five thousand dollar increase for vehicle maintenance. Sheriff, would you like to talk to that?
Just that we've got a, we've got an aging patrol fleet and as you know, that's where most of the miles are. And we've got an aging patrol fleet and, uh, vehicle maintenance there is continuing to go up. Shop labor is con- continuing to go up. We bid those jobs throughout the county, uh, from something as a, simple as a water pump replacement to set of tires and anything in between. And so we, we bid those and we call around and try to get the, the best price and with that it's still, it's increasing. And so we're, we've been in the, been in the red on that off and on for the last several years. At the end of the budget, we'd do a line item, a budget amendment and Judge and I's consideration when we talked were that it was that, hey, at some point we've got to get this thing back to a balanced line item instead of reaching and grabbing money at the end of the budget year when we know it's gonna be a higher amount. And so, uh, that was the reason for the increase there, uh, on that, on that line.
There's no other line item that you're over in that we could pull from?
That I'm over in or you mean under?
Over. Is there something you're not spending where it could be moved? Because I know in the past, that's what we tend to do is if you're, if you're over and, uh, just say equipment, I'm just pulling something out of the air. You're over five hundred there, you could add it to that at the end of the year to make it all balance out. And that would be my question.
And, and if that's the court's pleasure, that, that's where we've been the last couple of years. And so that was, you know, do we continue down that path of, of knowingly set a line item, dollar amount that we know is not realistic? You know, at what point do we?
No, I agree, but that's what we've done. I mean, it happened to all the Commissioners last year. Wherever money was just moved into different accounts. So that has been the pleasure of the court, so that would be my question to the court. Is, is it, we're gonna set a new precedent, which is fine, but if we are, I think it needs to be all the way.
That works every year, except the year that you don't have money in the other line items and, and so.
And just to remind the Sheriff, I actually asked him the same question. Did he have any line item that he'd gone under on in, uh, his, his, you know, he was looking at his historical data that he could just move that money. And he said that in the past, uh, that that's been mostly salaries and, and you really can't. That's what's been used to kind of offset the three or four line items that he's gone over is the salaries by, uh, positions, uh, being vacated by somebody with a long amount of tenure and then replaced with somebody brand new. So that, that's what's offset his budget in the past. We did discuss trying to move some other money and just didn't see a place that we could do that.
And Sheriff, on, on the age of the vehicles, do you know about what age we're dealing with?
Uh, on, on the patrol side, on the marked cars, we're, twenty-twelve, uh, would be the oldest. Our mileage on the oldest, you know, most used vehicles are in the mid hundred thousands, one forties to one sixty. Those will be up for, for replacement this coming year.
And just to note, the line item for, uh, auto purchases, he requested to leave that the same. Any other discussion regarding the vehicle maintenance line item?
Thank you, Sheriff.
If you look on page forty, about halfway down, you've got the line item four oh-five for prisoner medical. If you look at the last two years for twenty fifteen, the actual expenditures was a hundred and ten thousand and in two, two thousand sixteen, it was ninety-nine thousand. For as long as I can remember, we budgeted seventy-five thousand there and the Sheriff requested to increase that by ten thousand to eighty-five thousand. Four oh-five prisoner medical.
Again, the, the theory behind that is the same, you know, we're continually seeing historically that we're over in that line item to be able to have a clear reflection of, of what it's taking to operate, uh, that jail. Uh, we're trying to come up online and get a little better, get a little better idea of a dollar amount there. Prisoner medical is, prisoner medical and prisoner food obviously is the hardest to forecast because it relies so heavily, uh, on the population of the jail. When your population goes up, you're feeding more mouths and you're treating more sick inmates. We're fortunate with, with Linda Davis and her staff to help us, uh, with the billing side of prisoner medical. She's able to step in and, and be able to get us billed at a Medicaid rate and sometimes even lower, which results in a huge savings to the, to the county. Um, but even with that, you all know medical's high and it's continuing to go up and, and when you have more people in jail, you've got more medical and you've got more mouths to feed and so we, uh...
And Commissioner, that was also part of the discussion that we had about trying to find another line item to move, uh, with this going over so much the past few years and he's only asking for a ten thousand dollar increase when more li- most likely it'll go over again next year. He's hoping not, but there's no way to really forecast it.
Well, if you take the forty-nine thousand extrapolated out with five months left, you're gonna go over ninety thousand already.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you're gonna go.
And, and...
Probably close to the ninety-nine thousand.
And with the vehicle maintenance too. And that was part of the discussion that we had is, is where are we gonna be come, come September thirty? We're gonna be in the same spot we've been in the last couple of years and that's, that's, uh, that's going over on that line item, dollar amount on both of those, so.
And I would remind the court too, that the last couple of regular meetings we have, we've approved the Sheriff to pay some, uh, invoices out of the seizure account, uh, for vehicle maintenance. So he's been using seizure funds to help offset the expenditures to the budget to pay for vehicle maintenance. And, uh, was there another line item you paid, uh, uh, equipment and new vehicles as well? So those are the two operational, uh, line items that the Sheriff requested expenditure increases out of. There was also another increase that he requested and I've asked him to come and talk to us about that today regarding overtime in the jail. And, uh, Sheriff, I'll just turn that over to you if you could discuss that. Just kind of tell the court what you explained to me regarding that.
Exactly. To bring you up to speed, the, uh, the number of employees in the jail obviously is based on the, uh, the state's statutes when it deals with inmate guards to inmates ratio. There's gotta be forty-eight, there has to be one guard for every forty-eight inmates that are in that jail. You cannot count your control room operator because he's locked in a picket. He's not able to go out onto the floor and help with a disturbance or, or anything else. And you can't count the guard that's on the third floor, the old jail, uh, because each floor is considered separate. So when you start doing the math and you're needing to be, to be legal, you've got to have a, a guard for every forty-eight inmates. Our population in the last two and a half to three months has skyrocketed. In fact, we were at maximum capacity twice in the last thirty days. What that means is we're running right now, we're, we're budgeting and set up for six jail, uh, six jailers per, per shift with four shifts. That's a supervisor and five jailers. When we're at a hundred and forty-four, more than a hundred and forty-four inmates in the main jail, we're at full staff capacity, meaning we need all six bodies here to be legal every day on every shift. So there's no way for anybody to take off. There's no way for anybody to be sick. Uh, it takes every single body that we have to be legal. Um, you, that, you can't staff, you can't operate that way. And we've been there multiple times in the last, in the last thirty, sixty, ninety days. We're fortunate, our count has dropped a little bit in the last two weeks with a lot of hard work from some prosecutors and, and judges. But it's just a matter of time before we creep back up again. And so we're trying to come up with a way, you know, we don't pay overtime as far as monies in the jail. Uh, nor, nor do the sworn side. There is no money. There's comp time that's available, uh, when they, when they exceed the hundred and seventy-one hours in any twenty-eight day pay period. I can't get a jailer from another staff, from another shift who's off. It's hard to convince them to come to work when they're not getting anything out of it other than comp time. In other words, if I've got an outage, if I've got a, if I've got a shift that I need more people on and I'm gonna reach out to him and say, hey, I need you to come to work. He's gonna come in, he's gonna make comp time, but if he can't take that comp time off, would you answer your phone? Would you come to work? No. And, and that's the, that's the, the, the catch twenty-two that we're in right now is, is with, with twenty-four jail staff during the day, as the judge and I talked, you can, you can hedge your bet a little bit because you've got a jail administrator, a jail nurse and a second-in-command who can help you meet your number. They can help you meet your legal number. You can use them. But if they're not here at night, then you can't and there is no backup plan. And your full staff at six and it says, you've gotta have six people on duty. So there's never a way to get those people off. And again, there's never a way for anybody to come to work because you're giving them comp time, but they can't ever take it. We can't continue on the road that we're on. So one of the, one of the issues that the judge and I looked at were the possibility of having a funded overtime. You're roughly looking county liability on, on dollars and cents. I think we figured somewhere around sixty for, uh, for total cost for, for a jailer, for an entry level, first day on the job jailer. Uh, salaries fourteen oh-two bi-weekly, uh, thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand with benefits. You're looking at, at somewhere in that fifty to sixty range. Commissioner Cooper and I very briefly spoke on that and I said, hey, that's great if you start adding employees, but you're looking at, to get one on each shift, you're looking at two hundred thousand. I think a stopgap measure for that is if we can be able to go to the well for some overtime money, that's a little bit more of incentive, but I can reach on the other shifts where guys are actually off and say, hey, I need somebody to come to work. It's an opportunity to make a little overtime to make some money. Uh, I think that, I think that's a bigger incentive for them to come to work. And it's not as much of a capital outlay for us in a budget on the front end like it is adding manpower. Uh, I think that's your only other quick fix. Again, that only works as long as you have other employees who are willing to come in. You know, I can only make them come to work so many times before I lose them. And, and at some point, they're gonna, they're gonna take their ball and go home and say, hey, I can't continue, uh, working the way that I'm working. So we're gonna have to do something to address that, uh, to, to be able to be legal. Uh, right now our count is, is of such that, that I've gotta have, uh, gotta have five total on the shift. We're right on that line of jumping up to six. Uh, could happen today, could happen tomorrow, depends on what our prisoner intake is.
What does the labor law say about comp time in lieu of overtime when they cannot take it?
There, you've got two choices. You can, you can roll it over, which we, we generally allow you to roll over a week of vacation a year. Is that correct, Judge?
Yes, sir. Comp time always accrues.
Comp time rolls over, it accrues and it rolls over from year to year. But at some point, you've gotta be able, I can force you to take comp time in, in, in times where we're heavy, where I've got plenty of people. Then, then I can force you and dictate, hey, you need to burn some of your comp time. But the flip side of that is if I'm giving you comp time, but I'm never giving you a chance to take that off, I think you're gonna have a good argument with the county.
Well, that's my question. I know the county can set whatever rules it wants to, but tho- those do not override labor laws.
Correct.
Have we gotten a labor law opinion on this?
I have not. Uh, we can, we can definitely reach out to a county attorney.
Advisable too, before we get hit with a labor law claim that they're not able to, to get their money.
Well, they, they get paid when they separate. Any, any comp, comp time that they've accrued, they have to, we have to pay when they leave.
I mean, my question is, does that, does that pass the labor laws?
Yes, and, and if it's, they accrued it time and a half and they get paid time and a half.
When they separate.
When they separate.
But the, the whole point of that is if you're accruing that time, we might as well be paying overtime to begin with because we're gonna have to pay it in the end anyway.
And that's what, which is...
And, and the other catch twenty-two to that is if somebody has to take off, he's gonna have to bring somebody from another shift anyway. So it's, it's, you're gonna end up having to pay it out in the long run anyway, so it's, it's my...
And remember, with your jail and your peace officers, you don't hit that time and a half statute until they hit a hundred and seventy-one hours. We're not a forty-time week. In other words, you don't, you don't get time and a half overtime after forty. It's, it's after a hundred and seventy-one hours. So any extra work is straight time until you breach that hundred and seventy-one hour.
And that's in a twenty-eight day.
And in a twenty-eight days pay period, yes. And, and that's a moving, sliding twenty-eight days.
Applies to the jail as well.
That applies to the jail as well. That's jail, doesn't apply to dispatch, but it does apply to jail and peace officers.
Sheriff, what are you, what are you requesting in your budget?
I think we had said twenty, uh, we'd, we had looked at trying to come up with, with twenty thousand, um, to be able to, to be able to use that, to manage that. I think it gets us headed in the right direction, but at some point, we're gonna, we're gonna have to look at, at some bodies over there. Especially if we keep the population that we've begun to see here in the last six months.
Got another question, uh, and, and I briefly talked to Wayne about it. The Sandra Bland Act, is that gonna affect our jail or are we gonna have to hire more people or?
At this point, it's not gonna affect us as far as personnel, uh, yet. What it does affect us at is time. The time to process that inmate from when they come through the door until they reach general population because there are more duties being put on you. There's more things that you have to do. There's more things you're looking for and screening for. Fortunately, we were doing about eighty percent of that already, uh, under some best practices recommendations that Sheriff Kane had started. But yes, there's gonna be some more things that come from that. Only time is gonna tell on how fast you're gonna be able to keep up. If you're, if you're getting prisoners in faster than what you can process them and move them to a jail cell, then yeah, you're gonna need some more boots on the ground at some point. It's just too early for us to tell what kind of effect that's gonna have.
Sheriff, thank you. Just real quick, Commissioner Kirkendall had asked about the amount and we did put twenty in the proposed budget for the jail. Uh, we also discussed that if we're gonna do that, we needed to look at, uh, possibly some overtime in the law enforcement side for the law enforcement, uh, deputies. So, uh, that amount that we came up with was ten and that is in the proposed budget as well.
You know, and, and we're kind of in the same position there in that you've got some minimum staffing that you're working with on deputies and, and folks were there. For those of all that know or don't know, there's four deputies per shift. But as our workforce gets older, they're earning more time off. They're getting, you know, another week's vacation. There's fourteen county holidays. At some point, they're taking off and so you've gotta have people to fill those holes. We're in the same position there like we are in the jail. Uh, you can't, you can't get somebody to come in and work and they're gonna look at you and say, hey, boss, I, I'm not getting anything out of this. You know, I, you're giving me time to take, but I can't ever take this time off because we're at minimum staffing. There's people off on vacation or holidays, so I can't take my comp time off. I came in and worked for you and you gave me twelve hours or eighteen hours if it was over the limit, but I can't take that. And so we're in that same situation with, with the, uh, with the jail staff, with the deputies as well. And, and so we're, we're looking at that. It's not as critical as the jail because there is no, there is no minimum requirement on the peace officer side. The state tells you how many people you've gotta have in to run your jail. They don't on the street, okay? So that's, that's, that's up to me and the best practices and the best resources that I can allocate out there and where I think I need the, that coverage. But in the jail, we have no choice. So there is a little bit of difference there, but, uh...
Me, this is a pretty simple, uh, decision to make about putting overtime into this man's budget. The big decision's gonna come for this court when we try to decide are we gonna raise taxes to accommodate hiring new people or go private in that jail. I mean, we're gonna have to make a decision one day what we're gonna do. But, uh, I think this is a pretty, uh, simple, uh, answer for right now is given.
It's a gap fix. I, I realize that. It's not long-term, but at least it gives me a little bit of leeway to take care of that employee who's being called in on their day off, to give them a little incentive to come in, to answer that phone and come cover a shift for, for a hole that we have. And, but yeah, we're, long-term, you're gonna have to address that in the years to come. Our county's growing and, and everything is relative. The more you grow and the more population, the more crime and the more inmates you're gonna have in jail. And, and we're, we're almost there. In fact, there's twice I've met with a judge in the last thirty days to say, get ready, we're probably fixing to have to farm out prisoners this weekend to other county jails. And, you know, we try hard to, to keep from having to do that, but we're, we're gonna be there. It's not a matter of if, it's just when.
And that goes back to my question. My concern is that how does the Labor Department look at this? Is it actually comp time if the person cannot take it off?
You, you raise a good point.
I, I'd rather see that question answered by us before someone files a suit and the Labor Department answers as far, far. Because that time is gonna be expensive.
So we probably need just a question answer, Debbie, of from when it's earned to when it's burned. You know, how long is that day staying on the books, being earned or being burned?
What is our responsibility as a county government to that employee?
Allow them to take off, yeah.
I can tell you Jasper County at the end of each budget year pays off any accrued comp time from the year.
That would be good. I would go for that.
I don't know if you was here on the path horse. I was here, but that was a pretty check that the county had to come up with.
Sheriff, before you leave, we got one more thing. This is something the Sheriff just learned about and I did as well on Friday and I learned about it from the DA. I'm not sure how, if you learned about it the same, but there's a new, uh, legislature's helping us out here with a new, uh, directive they've given the DPS to start collecting for, uh, the lab. This has been a free service to us in the past, but starting September first, two thousand seventeen, they're gonna start charging us for every sample that's sent in. So every, uh, uh, bag of weed, controlled substance, uh, blood specimen to test for alcohol concentration, we're gonna start getting charged for that. Now, there's a little blurb in here where it talks about the state's gonna give some type of voucher, but they hadn't figured out exactly what that's gonna be yet. They'll, uh, let us know late in the summer.
Right.
So I've not put anything extra in the proposed budget for this expenditure. There's no way to tell what it's gonna be. Uh, I would like to see us compare the cost of the DPS lab to the Jefferson County Crime Lab. Because we can start getting things a lot quicker now if we do that.
And there were some private labs. Uh, there's, there's a private lab in Shreveport, Bojor that's doing DNA, that's giving you about a week turnaround. Uh, if you'll, I don't know if there's a schedule of fees on that coffee that you're looking at. Uh, what's gonna really affect us here at, at the county is, yes, as far as the drugs, but also toxicology. So every one of your inquests that your, that your JP's order an autopsy on, I think the beginning fee on that is six hundred and fifty dollars for toxicology as a request, as a result of an inquest. Um, your victim spends some money. There's a lot of autopsies that get ordered by your JP's, and rightly so, where you're needing to know a cause of death. Um, they, we were a little blindsided by this. Yes, the Appropriations Act did cover, uh, the shortcomings in DPS's budget, but they left it up to the DPS director as to how he was going to recoup and close that gap. He chose to pass that on to the, to the other agencies who were using his lab. Uh, so make no mistake, that was not a legislature mandated cost to counties and cities. They said there's a, there's a gap in what your funding is and what your operating expenses. How are you gonna close that gap? How are you gonna recoup some revenue? He chose to reach out to the, to the agencies and start charging September one. Um, we do have a line item that covers investigative expenses. That's historically been where, where undercover buy money, uh, has come from. It's historically been where, uh, the payment of informants or any other monies that were needed for a covert operation, that's where they had come from. We reduced that, uh, if I'm not mistaken, last year. Uh, it was a six thousand dollar line item. Um, that's also where if we have a major terrible, uh, violent crime scene, and we're needing a crime lab to come out to the scene to help us, that's where that would come from. Um, that fund is, that line item's pretty healthy right now. We've, we've had a fortunate year that we haven't had to have major crime scene services, something beyond what our expertise is. That is an area, that's, that's where I think you would, would wanna try to beef up that line item as you're gonna start paying for, for drug samples and things to, to, you know, that's gonna be tested. Your, your DWI cases, your blood specimens that you're sending in, so that's gonna start adding up. Um, we just found this out Friday. What I'd, what I'd ask the court is to give me a little bit of a, of a day or two. I wanna crunch some numbers to see about how many cases we submitted eh, last year, and what they were as a breakdown. That's gonna kind of help us forecast. Again, you never know what you're gonna have as far as crime, but I think it's gonna give us a fairly good snapshot of what we're looking at spending in the new budget year, based on what our, our habits have been in the past, and so.
Do we know how many autopsies a year that we generally do, with our JPs here?
And if I could just speak up real quick, we have three JP's here. We already, uh, pay for those toxicologies, don't we, through the autopsies?
Yes, sir.
And we have that in a line item in the commissioner's court budget for autopsies, so it's already being paid for.
I, I thought, I knew at one time we did, and I think we'd allowed, what, seven hundred dollars per autopsy or something?
Oh, it's two thousand and.
Two thousand, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Long time.
Nineteen fifty, I believe.
And, and again, if, if, if you've got the autopsy, that's one, that's one payment and one service. But if there's other biologicals that you're doing a toxicology report on, that's in addition to the cost of your, of your quote autopsy. So, um, gunshot residue cases, uh, yeah, especially the DNA. DNA is gonna hit us the hardest.
Is Jefferson County doing our autopsies?
Uh, yes, Jeff, Jefferson County does our autopsies, uh, through the, through the morgue there.
But we're billed from a private company, aren't we?
Yeah.
We don't get billed by the county.
Yeah, they have private doctors that are resident, reside, have residence at Jefferson County.
The, uh, I, I agree, as far as comparing the cost. You know, Jefferson County has a regional crime lab. The way they figure their cost is a little bit different. You don't pay per item submitted to have it analyzed for evidence. At the end of the year, they take all of the lab submission requests that came into the, to the regional lab, and they pull out the number of submissions from your agency. And whatever percentage your cases, if, if they processed a thousand pieces of evidence this year, and your agency submitted a hundred pieces, then their, their operating budget, you're paying ten percent. That's how they figure theirs there. So historically, that's been a high, it's been high for us, and, uh, because a lot of what we had them do was very simple drug tests. Some of the more elaborate DNA testing, we were kinda getting that piece of the pie put on us, and when we really didn't deserve it. But, uh, that's why DPS was free. Other than having to drive to the other side of Houston to submit it, that's where we were. So now, a- and we knew, we knew that at some point in time, the state was gonna say, hey, you start paying, uh, for your, for your evidence, so. You know, as far as, as far as how much to add, I, I really think we need some information, uh, that I can put together for you to, for us to be able to make an educated decision on whether or not, and how much to add in that line item. Um, but you're not gonna be, I mean, at this point, there's no way that any of us can make that decision without looking at something to tell us where we've been in the last couple of years and where we think that's gonna put us money-wise for the upcoming year. Uh, I can, I can do that fairly quick and get those figures back, uh, to the court before we finalize the budget, if that would, would please the court.
Sheriff, would it also be helpful to get some direction from the prosecutors that, uh, if they look like the case is gonna plead, and we don't have to worry about sending that to the lab? But if it looks like it's gonna go to trial, then we need to send it?
And, and they've been fairly good with that. The problem is, on your felony cases, it's all going, cause you've gotta have it to go to grand jury for indictment. So you can't, you know, the county attorney works with us really well, uh, as far as what they just have to have a lab result on. Um, they're able to, they're able to plea a lot of their pro se cases, but they're, they're able to stipulate as to what that evidence was. But on the, on the felony side, they're getting ready to go to grand jury, and they've gotta have that lab report, and that holds up that case until they get that lab report back to tell you what was actually in that bag, so.
Well, as a practicality, the chances of needing money for a contingency are greater in the crime area than there are in having a hurricane.
You're exactly right.
We know that we're gonna have increasing crime costs.
We've, we've, again, we're a little bit ahead of the game on this, because we did have a line item that covered investigative services. Um, and again, historically, that was, was where our monies would come from to pay informants and buy drugs undercover, uh, and then for any other covert, you know, the expenses that we would have. So there is a little money there that we can fall back on. Uh, would it be enough to cover? I don't think so.
Well, it is preferable to line item it, if possible, but we always realize that crime increases and increases paid, given to us by the legislature are in greater contingency than is the possibility of having a hurricane.
No doubt. You're exactly right.
We don't want the crime or the hurricane.
But we, we're gonna house crime.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Sheriff. Anything further? Any other questions for the sheriff?
That's all, man. Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, we have, uh, two worksheets that were on top of the proposed budget that Angela prepared. Do you mind going over those?
No, do you wanna? We're not gonna do human resources.
I guess we better. I'm sorry. I covered up my agenda. Yeah. So next is human resources. Debbie, I think you only had one request, and that was to make your part-time clerk a full-time clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right, if you could just discuss that.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, make my part-time clerk full-time. There is, uh, plenty of work in the human resource department to warrant this change. Um, yeah, there's, um, I'm, before I took this position, uh, there was a full-time clerk for seven years. Uh, whenever I did take this position, that position was done away with, and I, I am grateful for my part-time clerk, but I think the time has come that we need to reinstate it as full-time.
And I would just add that, uh, this is in, included in the proposed budget to make her clerk a full-time clerk. And, uh, I can tell you, most times when I leave, uh, if, if it's after hours, Debbie's vehicle's still in the parking lot. She's here on weekends sometimes to catch up, because her office is that busy. And I definitely think that this is a need that she has. She asked for it last year, and we did not fill it. I think it's a need that we should fill this year. Any questions from the court? Anything further, Debbie?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we do have the Roden Bridge departments, and I'll go through those in just a moment, if, uh, if Angela could go ahead and, and discuss these two worksheets that we have.
Okay, the first worksheet is about the appraised values. We received some appraised values on April the twenty-fifth, an estimated amount. Um, then the certified appraised values came in at a larger amount on July the nineteenth. There was an increase in the estimated net taxable value from what was adopted in our fiscal year seventeen by a hundred and twenty-three million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Our rolling stock decreased by two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. And so our total estimated net value increased over last year's adopted budget by a hundred and twenty-three million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. If you multiply that by our current tax rate, that gives you, um, an estimated tax revenue of seven hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. And then if you subtract the, the decrease in our, I want the increase in our frozen tax loss, that's forty-five thousand, four twenty. So our estimated total tax revenue, which includes our frozen tax loss, the difference between last year and this year is six hundred and six, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars at a ninety-nine percent collection rate. That's an increase in our tax, tax revenue by six hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Our certs also increased, our certs, um, increased by a hundred and twenty-three dollars, the tax revenue over last year. So what we have budgeted or proposed a budget for our certs is one thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And we've offset, set that revenue by some, uh, expenses in Roden Bridge two's budget. Is there any questions about our increase in our tax revenue? The appraisal district said that there was fifty million dollars increase in our minerals and approximately fifty-two million dollars increase in our new properties.
Fifty-two in minerals?
Fifty in minerals and approximately about fifty-two in new property.
All right, then the other worksheet that she gave us, uh, is just a comparison from the fiscal year seventeen adopted budget to the fiscal year eighteen proposed budget. It shows, uh, any increase or decrease in each fund. And, uh, it's pretty self-explanatory. If there's any questions, we can discuss that as I go through the budget. I'm gonna start with, uh, Roden Bridge. Everybody will look in their proposed budgets. That'll be the first fund that we come to. There were some requests for some increases there, and what I, uh, decided to do, and we can discuss that now, is, uh, I increased each Roden Bridge debu- budget by twenty-five thousand overall. And what we did was, uh, we took the, uh, materials and supplies line item, which was the line item that was used last year to divide up and make the other, uh, new line items, such as uniforms and vehicle maintenance and things like that. It was always being paid out of the materials and supplies line item. That money was, uh, divvied up among those new line items. We took twenty-five thousand and added it to materials and supplies. And then by looking at the history over this past year for those new line items that I just mentioned, uh, if any of those could be reduced any, we did, and we took that amount that was left. Uh, just for instance, if we took, um, the first one I see is drug and alcohol test in Roden Bridge one. It was reduced from five hundred dollars down to two fifty, so we put that two fifty in materials and supplies. So you didn't lose it out of your budget, it stayed in the budget. And then the overall budget increased twenty-five thousand for your operations. And then, uh, that was the same for all four Roden Bridge, one, two, three, and four. So I know that's less than a couple of commissioners had requested, and it's a little more than a couple of others requested, but just tried to do the, the same across the board. In the past, uh, the cuts that have been made to the budget, the largest cuts that have been made to the budget have been in Roden Bridge and in the sheriff's office. And, uh, now that we've seen a little bit of increase in revenue, we've tried to add some of that money back. Is there any discussion or questions regarding that?
I'd just like to bring to the court's attention that, you know, we're adding a lot slower than we reduced. The demands on Roden Bridge are tremendous. Uh, the time and leeway that constituents give you to respond to an issue are getting less, and people are beginning to wear their feelings more on their shoulders. So I would request that this court consider an increase, and if we're gonna have a slow increase, then we need to see an increase every year till we get to a manageable, uh, system. For instance, you know, I know my, my precinct's bigger, but I'm working a nineteen eighty-two roller. And we, we talked about the importance of, uh, maintenance costs and stuff for the sheriff's office, and I would just like to see this court put the same emphasis on Roden Bridge. When Commissioner Franklin was here, he would remind the court that the sheriffs need a good road to respond to. You know, if they get to a road and they can't navigate that road to go down and report to a crime, it falls back on the commissioners. And we've been hit hard the last three years in commissioners' court in order to, uh, keep the tax rate low. I disagree with the majority of the court on that we can take those hits, because services do decrease when we decrease our budget. And so, for the record, I would like to see it increase at a better rate, because when you have, we don't know what the effective tax rate is, so we don't know what the overall increase is gonna be. But if you're increasing revenue by six hundred thousand, then I don't see why we can't increase commissioners' budgets more on this budget if you're not gonna lower the effective tax rate, if we're gonna go with the current rate.
And my answer to that, Commissioner, is we gave some pretty big raises this year, and that took up most of our six hundred thousand dollar increase in revenue.
And, and we're appreciative of that, but just for the record, I disagree with the rate that we have cut our budgets.
Noted. Any other discussion regarding that?
Well, I can agree with Chris, that, you know, I'd like to see our budgets restored. But I think looking, unless some exceptional growth comes somewhere in this county, and unless the commissioners are willing to jump a tax rate significantly, which I think the public will quickly tell you you shouldn't have done it, that Roden Bridge is gonna be in a difficult, we just filed our annual road report, and I know it says to give an estimate of what it would take to put all the roads in your precinct in good shape, and just in mine, it was right at six million dollars.
On that team.
And you're, well, it will never happen. But I also know from dealing with the public and listening to theirs, they don't want more taxes. And we just heard the sheriff's report, and crime does increase. And ultimately, this board has to, this commissioner's court has to set the tax rate, and the public doesn't see a pothole on a county road the same way they see a crime.
Well, I think they do if you look at Facebook, Commissioner.
Well, they, they may, but I, I have, I have, I have run the figures on it, and the number of people receiving, using a county road, and the number of people using crime services are far different. And you've got the big cities of Lumberton and Sillsby, Coates and Sour Lake, and when you take those people out of the mix, they don't get any Roden Bridge services.
They all use a county road at some place, whether it's to go to a national park, whether they go to the river.
I agree they use it some, but they don't, they just don't see it in the same light. And, uh, I, I, I'd like to see the Roden Bridge budget increase, but I'll reiterate, unless something happens to the tax base, and that will have to come through oil and gas, cause oil and gas is what cost us about six million dollars in taxes that the Roden Bridge took the big cuts. But what I see is long-term, they're talking about oil maybe now in the thirties, and it's in the forties. And there were people saying, well, it'll be back to ninety. I don't think this court will ever live to see it to ninety, unless you have some type of serious war. So I, I think we've got a situation that we're gonna be living with, and we're gonna have to find out ways to, uh, and I agree with you about the roller, cause I borrow your roller. I don't even have one.
Right.
And I've got equipment that's way, way old.
And it's, it cost us, you know, anywhere from, probably the smallest piece of equipment we're gonna buy is a dump truck, and that starts at sixty thousand.
I need a grade all right now. That's about two hundred and seventy-five, three hundred thousand, uh, but I think that, and, and this is not a popular subject, but I think this county's gonna have to look at some type of cooperation on some of this equipment and stuff, cause those are big capital items. And, uh, I know a lot of people, when you say unit system, well, they just throw up their hands, but, uh, I think in the next few years, we'll be looking at some very tough decisions on how we maintain our road. I think in the next few years, we'll be living at some very tough decisions on how we maintain our road and bridge services.
Well, and for the record, I have not asked for a tax increase to cover these expenses.
Yeah, you wouldn't wanna go on record for that, I'm sure.
Well, no, but the way it was worded, I just wanna make sure that I clarify.
Yeah.
I've not asked for.
But county government is tough right now, especially in a county like Hardin County, which is getting this move out of Jefferson County. And, uh, then the legislature, you know, doesn't seem to have much sympathy for the counties. And, uh, so we're left to do the best we can, but ultimately, we have to set the tax rate, and that's going to temper everything we do on this court. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Robertson, comment?
Mr. Cooper?
No, sir.
I will move on to the general fund. Uh, I'd like to, uh, note too that the tax rate is, is gonna remain the same, at least as far as the proposed budget goes, the point five seven six two per one hundred dollar value that we've had the past two years.
Is that the effective tax rate?
No, sir, the effective tax rate. We received one Friday, then I was told that it needed to be recalculated, so do we have that, Shirley? The appraisal district had, uh, provided some information based on their software program that wasn't correct, so they were gonna provide us the new information. It looks like it's, uh, just a little bit lower, point five five five. As of Friday, it was point five five nine. Now it's point five 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 nine, the total effective tax rate. Is that right, Shirley?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And last year, I believe it was fifty-six, if I'm not mistaken, right?
What was the rollback rate? Did we have it on here?
Yes, sir.
What is that amount?
The rollback, point six.
What?
Point six.
Oh, okay. So we're well below it.
Yes, sir. All right, we have eight minutes left to finish this meeting, so let me try to rush through this, and if there's any questions, just stop me. Um, went through road and bridge, the increase of twenty-five thousand each budget. In the, uh, revenue side of the, uh, general fund, there's an ad valorem tax increase due to the increase in property and mineral values, which, uh, Angela went over with us earlier. On expenditure side, there's some increases, mostly as the, uh, salaries per the proposal from June the twenty-sixth that I, uh, presented to the court. There's, uh, been three other changes since then to some positions. I was asked by the, uh, floodplain administrator to look at the clerk in her office and, and see about giving a little bit more of an increase. I think that I increased that from fourteen dollars an hour to fourteen twenty-five an hour. Uh, the sheriff asked me to look at one of the clerks in the sheriff's office that was proposed at twelve, uh, eighty-five an hour, and I increased that to thirteen fifty an hour for that clerk. And then, uh, both of the district judges, uh, sent word to me through the auditor's office to look at the court coordinators at increasing them to a total of four percent. I think they were proposed at about a two point four percent increase. And, uh, so those, all of those increases are included in the proposed budget, and, uh, and we can discuss those now or at any time in the future, if you'd like. I also added a line item in the Commissioner's Court expenditures for case management software, and that line item is a hundred and fifty thousand. That's a brand-new line item that we have not had in the past, and that's something that, uh, the committee is working on to try to obtain court software for all of the offices that, uh, don't currently have it. Well, there's two that don't currently have it, it's the, both of the prosecutors' offices. And then to switch everybody over to that new software, if we're able to do that. So I did include a line item for that. Commissioner, I know it's less than the amount that you requested, but I just wanna remind you, we already have money in the budget for the district clerk and the county clerk that we can use toward that purchase if we need to. Uh, there's an increase in the, uh, VAWA prosecutor match in the Commissioner's Court budget. And I talked with the, uh, DA regarding that this morning, and, uh, Dale was here to speak with me about that as well. There's an item they've been able to use for in-kind match in the past that they're not able to use anymore. It has to do with the office space up there. They've changed the way that they, uh, will allow a, a person who, uh, are an entity that has that type of grant. Uh, basically, the building's so old that the depreciated value will not allow them to add that to in-kind match, so that increase is about eleven thousand dollars, where it should have only been maybe about twenty-five hundred to three thousand. Uh, they did tell me that there's a possibility they will not use that entire amount of increase. They're looking for ways to offset that, and and they're gonna try to do their best to offset that amount, but if not, the worst-case scenario is that, that would be an eleven thousand dollar increase. Also increased the courthouse maintenance and repairs under building maintenance. And there's some items that I increased in, increased in the indigent healthcare budget, just per the historical data from the past two years. And just to remind the court, uh, she had submitted a budget based on the GTRL. She also submitted a revised proposed budget whenever Ms. Stevens, uh, gave her some updated information on the GTRL about, uh, the first week of July. But we have set the budget based off of historical data and not what the state requires us to, to have there. And bottom line is, we'll be using zero dollars from the surplus to balance the fiscal year eighteen proposed budget.
Thank you, Judge, for doing such a good job on that. Going back to the salaries.
Yes, sir.
I would oppose any, uh, increases other than what your original proposal was on that sheet. I, I, I am for that. If, uh, if there's any other increases, I would say just let's do a five percent across-the-board raise.
And let me just say that I had overlooked the clerk in the sheriff's office. She, she should have not been making twelve eighty-five an hour. Um, so increasing her to thirteen fifty, I believe, is actually more than fair. She should probably be making more than that for the job duties that she has, but, and based on what other clerks in the courthouse make for doing similar job duties, but, uh, I agreed with the thirteen fifty an hour, and I also agree with the floodplain clerk. Uh, she was at fourteen an hour. She's, uh, been here eight years coming up this year. And, uh, starting deputy clerk in the deputy, in the county clerk or district clerk's office makes fourteen an hour, and I think fourteen twenty-five is not too much to ask.
Well, I like the, uh, first proposal you made that you worked up, and I looked over that and everything looked good, and I, I would go for that if the other court, uh, members do as well. I just remember last year, we gave some raises to particular ones, and the rest of the employees didn't get it, so I, I would like to stay with what you had, or either a five percent across the board instead of these increases. That's just my opinion.
I'd go with what, what you presented, Jason.
In the proposed budget, or, and that's?
Yes, that's.
These are the salaries that are in the proposed budget?
Correct.
Any other comments? Uh, what I would like to do is ask the court to take the proposed budget, review it over the next week, and let's set a special meeting for, uh, we could either do it Thursday afternoon, Friday, or Monday. I've already got a request from Commissioner Pelt not to do it Friday, which is fine.
I second that.
So, uh, and Angela won't be here Monday, but she'll be here.
No, I'll be here Monday. I won't be here Thursday.
Oh, she won't be here Thursday. Oh, we just set it for Monday morning at nine o'clock.
I have a conference in Austin.
The thirty-first.
Yes, sir. So we'll set that for nine AM on the thirty-first. We'll have a special meeting where we'll come back and discuss any thing else regarding the proposed budget and hopefully finalize it and set it, because it has to be filed by five a PM that day. Any other discussion regarding the proposed fiscal year eighteen budget from anybody on the court or anybody in the audience? Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. We're adjourned for a minute and a half, and we'll be back for our regular meeting.
Can we take five?
Yes. That's for the next meeting. It wasn't for this meeting. This, this has to do with the item on, on the next agenda.